Thank you.
Okay, we may have found the magic button. Yeah, fifth time's a charm. Okay. Here we go. Final roll call. Let's, let's do it.
Mr. Oling.
Present.
Ms. Carr, I'm here. Mr. Drake.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
Mr. Ehrlich.
Present.
Mr. Ferry.
I'm still here.
Ms. Ferris.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Good morning.
Ms. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Judge.
Here.
Mr. McNamara.
Here.
Ms. Marillas O'Neil. Ms. Seiber.
Here.
Ms. Stoller.
Here.
Chief Stephen. Mr. TeShara. Mr. Hitchcock.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Tracy. Thank you all for bearing with us. And now I'm going to go back to Tracy for the ever enjoyable remote meeting rules of the day.
For members of the public, to observe the meeting, go to trpa.gov. Under the calendar header, click on Advisory Planning Committee Meeting, Hybrid Meeting for March 12, 2025. They will find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. To address APC members directly with your comments, raise your hand in Zoom by clicking Raise Hand at the bottom of your screen at the appropriate Agenda item. With your hand raised, you will be unmuted by TRPA staff and have three minutes to address the APC. If you have used the dial-in numbers to join us by phone, you can dial *9 to raise your hand and be unmuted. For items that are agendized as information only, we'll hear public comment during the general public comment period at the end of the meeting. For items agendized for action or possible action, we will hear public comment before the APC takes any action. To remote APC members, if you wish to speak, you can also raise your hand in Zoom. You'll find the icon at the bottom of your screen. You may not use chat box to make any comments. We'll have sidebar conversations. Please mute your mic unless speaking to cut down on noise and also turn on your cameras if you're able. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Good job. Okay, moving on to item two, Approval of the Agenda. Any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Thank you, John. I will deem the agenda approved as it was posted for the record. And we'll go to item three. This is Public Interest Comments. Uh, this is for members of the public who wish to address the APC on non-agenda items. Please be aware, the APC is prohibited from taking action on items not on our agenda. I will first go to members of the public in the room. Please come to the podium and turn on the microphone and state your name. Seeing no members of the public in the room, we will go to Public Interest Comments Online. Remember, you can raise your hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen or push *9 on your telephone if you'd like to make a public comment. Please raise your hand now.
But, uh, Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised to comment.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. I'm going to go to item four. This is Disposition of Minutes. We have a draft set of minutes from our February 12, 2025 meeting. That's on page five of your packets. Any comments, questions on the minutes from APC members? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, Mr. Ehrlich.
Yeah, I saw a couple typos.
Okay.
So, page, uh, get to it. Where's my comments? Oops. I noticed one where my name was misspelled, so, uh, I'll have to find that one. And then there was, ah. There was another one where there was a letter three inserted in a regular English word, and I'm having trouble finding it right now.
Maybe you could just email Tracy.
Sure.
Okay, perfect. Anyone care to make a motion on those?
That's Jennifer Carr, move to approve with changes to amend typos.
I second.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Robert, do we need a roll call on minutes? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
I abstain. I wasn't there. Brian Judge.
Brian Judge abstaining, okay.
Mr. Chair, this is Kevin Hill. Also, I abstain since I was not at the last meeting.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, perfect. Our minutes are approved and we'll move on to the meat of our agenda. This is item five, a public hearing. And item five A is the 2025 and 2026 residential allocation distribution to the city of South Lake Tahoe, El Dorado County, Placer County, Douglas County, and Washoe County. Information on this item can be found on page 59 of your packets, and I'm going to pass this to Tiffany Good with TRPA to present. Good morning.
Uh, good morning, everybody. My name is Tiffany Good, Principal Planner and Local Government Coordinator here at TRPA. And, um, as, as, um, as stated, I'm presenting to you the residential allocation, release, and dispersment, distribution, pardon me. Uh, next slide, please. So in order to facilitate orderly growth and development as called for in the bi-state compact, the agency has adopted a development rights system. And under this system, there are existing development rights or existing development and new development rights as authorized under the regional plan. There are three types of development rights that can be used to construct a new residential unit. I'm going to gloss over the first two that you see on this screen. Um, the third is really the meat of our presentation here. But first, existing development, which includes tourist accommodation units, commercial floor area, residential units. These can all be converted to residential units of uses and transferred to parcels that are eligible for development and used to construct, uh, market rate residential units. Second, the agency can award residential bonus units for deed restricted, um, affordable, moderate, or local achievable income housing. And third, again, this is the the meat of our presentation today, the purpose of the presentation today, um, is residential allocations. And residential, uh, parcels are, that are legally existing as of the effective date of the 1987 regional plan have potential residential units of use, or basically they have the ability to be developed. And a residential allocation, when coupled with that, um, is a development right that can be used to construct a market rate residential unit. Next slide, please. So as of this, um, as part of TRPA's growth management system, uh, and program, the agency releases or meters out these residential allocations over time. Uh, the governing board considers the release of up to 520 residential allocations every four years. And the last release of allocations happened in 2021, so, uh, we're, we're due for, uh, the next release. And residential allocations are also considered for distribution to the local jurisdictions every two years based on the performance review system in chapter 50 of the TRPA code. Next slide, please. So the performance review system, um, is made up of these three components that you see up on the screen. Residential audit performance, which audits both project permits, residential project permits, and residential project compliance. Total maximum daily load, which from here on out, I'm just going to shorten to TMDL, um, and short-term rental neighborhood compatibility. Next slide, please. Um, so I'm just going to provide you a summary of the results of those three criterion that, um, were just on the previous slide and also in your staff report. Every year, TRPA conducts a residential and code compliance audit, and the code states that a jurisdiction shall receive its base allocation for an average audit score of 90% or greater. And staff found that all of the jurisdictions received a score of 90% or greater for both 2023 and 2024. Those are the subject audit years. And I do just want to take this quick opportunity to thank the local jurisdictions for working with me and providing a lot of information, um, so that we can get these audits done and, and, and well done on a great, um, great audit score. Next slide, please. So the total, uh, sorry, the Lake Tahoe, um, total maximum daily load, TMDL, is a program that requires local jurisdictions to reduce pollutant loads to restore, um, lake clarity. And the code states that a jurisdiction shall receive their base allocation for achieving a 90% or greater conformance with the TMDL targets, and that a jurisdiction shall receive one increment deduction for less than 90% to 75% um, conformance with the TMDL targets. So after consulting with, uh, the Lahontan Regional Water Quality Control Board and Nevada Division of Environmental Protection, TRPA found that, um, all of the jurisdictions were in substantial compliance with their TMDL load requirements, with the exception of Placer County, who achieved 75% of their target, and therefore, um, staff is recommending that they will receive one increment deduction each, for each 2023 and 2024. Next slide. Short-term rental guidelines. Um, in the Tahoe Basin, local jurisdictions manage short-term rentals. A little bit of background, uh, in 2019, TRPA's Local Government and Housing Committee convened a short-term rental, um, neighborhood compatibility working group. And that working group developed guidelines and a code amendment to make short-term rental neighborhood, um, compatibility the third criterion of the performance review system for residential allocations. And these guidelines, uh, um, include operational enforcement and locational criteria. Um, and these are just best practices for short-term, short-term rentals. So the code requires that local jurisdictions receive a score of 90% or greater to get their full allotment of, uh, residential allocations. And according to the neighborhood compatibility, um, score sheets that each of the local jurisdictions provided to TRPA, they are all achieving 90% or more of the short-term rental guidelines. Next slide. TRPA staff is recommending that all of the jurisdictions receive their annual base allocations for 2023 and 2024 based on the, uh, criterion just described, uh, with the exception of Placer County, um, due to the, um, uh, due to Placer County not achieving their lake clarity targets for 2023. I do just want to take a minute to explain that Placer County actually exceeded their lake clarity credits, um, their targets, sorry, for 2024. And therefore, they averaged, and that kind of brought their average up. So they averaged 75% of their targets over the course of the two years. Um, so this does result in, uh, one increment of deduction for both 2023 and 2024. And, um, these allocations are recommended to be deducted from the county's total. Next slide. Part of the performance review system, um, requires the convening of a performance review committee. Um, the performance review committee was convened on February 27th of this year, which is made up of the local jurisdiction staff that are listed up on the screen. Um, committee members are tasked with reviewing, um, TRPA's staff's recommendation regarding both the release and the distribution of residential allocations based on the performance review system. And at that February 27th meeting, the performance review committee voted to recommend to the APC, to recommend to the governing board, um, the release of 520 residential allocations for the next four years, and also recommended the distribution of the residential allocations to local jurisdictions for 2025 and 2026. And that concludes my presentation. I'll open it up for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Um, yeah, we had a good meeting on February 27th. Hitch was there, some others maybe in the room, but had a good discussion, so. Uh, thanks for all your work to help us get these allocations. And I will open this up to my fellow APC members for any comments or questions. I'll go in the room first and then we'll go online. Hitch?
Tiffany, I just had one question, and, um, TRPA doesn't do the below the Ices line draw anymore, right? So you don't withhold the 10% anymore?
We will still do that, yes.
Still hold the 10%.
Correct.
Yeah. And then if there's, if there's no takers, then at what point do you think we'll get those allocations?
So those do go into the pool, the TRPA pool. Um, and they, uh, I, I don't, I'll have to get back to you on when we evaluate that pool, but I believe it's at the end of the, um, at the end of the regional plan. The life of the regional plan, but I, I can confirm that for you.
Thanks, John. Any other comments? I don't see any in the room. I'll go to APC members online. Any comments for, questions for Tiffany? Let's see.
I've got one.
Uh, go ahead.
Kevin Drake.
Go, Kevin, and then we'll go to Crystal after you.
Thanks. Um, Tiffany, for, partly for my own benefit, would you clarify how the residential allocation numbers can have fit into the total number of developable parcels that exist? And what the, kind of give a little context about the program of allocating residential units by year?
Right, so back in, uh, when the regional plan in the 2012 update, um, there was analysis of the vacant parcels um, in the basin, also of the, um, the residential allocations from the previous plan that could be carried over to the 2020, 2012 regional plan. And that analysis was done to inform the, um, allocations that would be allotted, and I don't remember the total number, but it, it was a total number, um, over the course of the regional plan, and those were to be metered out, um, released every four years, and then dispersed to the local jurisdiction, jurisdictions every two years. So the, the allocation distribution system that we're under will take us to, I believe, 2032, at which point well, things will be reevaluated. Does that answer your question?
You said through 2032?
Yes.
And do each of the jurisdictions have uh, a larger number of developable parcels than the number of residential allocation units that they're getting?
Uh, I am not sure. I'd have to, I'd have to find that out.
I think in our case for El Dorado County, Kevin, that is true. Yeah, we'll have more developable parcels than the allocations that we would theoretically obtain through 2032.
Same for the city.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Crystal, you're next.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to kind of touch on the, on the Placer side, um, of the scoring, um, just to provide a little context around that. So I've met with our staff, um, and getting the results, we, we met internally to kind of figure out kind of what went wrong on our side with the TMDL. Um, and I just want to point out, you know, we, we take it very seriously, um, not just the audit, but just what we're doing in terms of, you know, our, our responsibility to meet water quality goals. Um, what we experienced in 2023, my understanding is that was the really heavy, well, I know this, that was a really heavy snow load year. Um, so we had some challenges with um, sweeping and then the testing of the sediment on the various different roadway segments. So there was a challenge there with the testing and reporting that to Lahontan and in, in terms of the timing, so there, that's, that sort of factored into the scoring there. Um, and then in addition, there was some trouble with, um, stormwater maintenance of one infiltration system is my understanding. And so I just wanted to mention, we've, we've met internally to talk about lessons learned and how to move forward, uh, to, to, you know, not let this happen again. So just wanted to kind of, for the record, you know, get that, uh, mention that and, and just that we do take this seriously and um, understand, you know, where it landed us with, with the audit, um, but just that we, we intend to uh, make some internal changes so that this doesn't happen again. So that's it for me.
Thanks, Crystal. Yep, that was a tough year. Um, Robert?
That answered my question.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, going back to the previous question, just to make it clear for everybody, including those listening in, there are no additional development rights created. There's a set amount of development rights in the regional plan. The allocation just is the timing of the release. So I know that wasn't exactly what the question was, but I think some people keep thinking, oh, you're allocating new growth and development. We're not. We're just timing out, phasing out, phasing in what's left.
Right, thanks for that clarification. And just to add to that, we did have a discussion on February 27th at the Performance Review Committee that really, none of the local jurisdictions have a waitlist for their allocations anymore. And so it's, I think it's assumed that we will get these allocations and more than likely, there's not a long line of people like there used to be waiting to get them from us, so. It's just, you know, a timing of the market and market conditions and perhaps other factors, cost, but, um, we did have a good discussion on that. Garth?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I'm just wondering, were there any allocations that were allocated back in 2021 that were not utilized by any of the jurisdictions? And if so, do those roll over? Or are they then rescinded? What's that process?
There are several allocations from each of the jurisdictions from 2020. Well, the last release was in 2023 and 2021. Correct. Right, so there are, that, I think most of the jurisdictions still have many of those. And they do roll over, um, and, and stay with the jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Judge, and then Mr. Young.
Hey, I just wanted to expand on Crystal's explanation. Uh, yeah, I've had a lot of conversations with Placer. And it was a big winter, and, um, they weren't able to sweep in order to do their road ramps. There's three ways to get clarity credits. One is to have clean roads, but you have to prove it by doing road graph assessment method. Proving it's clean. The other is, uh, you get clarity credits by having stormwater infrastructure, which there was one in Kings Beach where they had some supply chain issues where they weren't able to replace the electric dish filters. So they lost some credits there. Um, but to be clear, the third way is by having, uh, residential PM feeds in place or, you know, private parcel vehicles. But no one on the California side uses that method. Um, if you want to go deep into this, go to ltmfo.org, um, go to the clarity factor. You can go very deep. All the explanations are in there and all the scores. Uh, it's a self-reporting system for all jurisdictions. Um, so the municipal stormwater permit, which includes Placer, El Dorado, and the city, has a three-year milestone, which is the end of this past water year, um, per compliance, and then a five-year milestone, which will champion out those five-year increments and increasing fine settlement, nitrogen phosphorus reductions. So there's no real enforcement involved in sort of these intermediate years. Um, and just because they didn't perform their road ramps does not mean that there was an increase in fine settlement particles going to the way, which just means they didn't measure it. So that's, I just want to make that very clear. Um, it does not mean bar pollution, what's going on like.
Thanks for those comments, Brian. That's good context. Mr. Young?
Hi, um, I thought I would just mention, because everybody is asking, that we have, um, in Washoe County quite a few allocations from previous years. Um, I think, uh, it, there have been in previous years, maybe a little bit of irritation with us for that, because as mentioned, other jurisdictions used to have waiting lists for their allocations when Washoe County always seemed to have plenty. So I think the days, I hope the days of being irritated with this are gone. Um, but we do, we do appreciate that we have those, that book of allocations, and we are, um, uh, we really believe, and as we always have, that those are going to be really useful for us as we try and design ways um, uh, to do the redevelopment that's necessary in our, um, in our town centers. Uh, uh, we really appreciated when, uh, the TRPA created that conversion process and the ability to to use different development rights differently, um, based on a conversion, uh, because we have, uh, uh, significant, uh, restrictions on our CFA. Um, and so, um, uh, and then looking forward towards our ability to provide some workforce housing or, um, uh, alternative housing. Uh, we're also really just, uh, we have significant barriers, and we believe that um, uh, accessory dwelling units may be one of our only real, uh, opportunities to make significant, uh, uh, headway in that. Um, and, uh, allocations will be necessary for that. So, um, we do have some, um, on books from previous years. Um, but it's not like we're hiding them away and kind of just, uh, uh, squirreling them away. We have always, um, been actively looking for ways to use those to solve some of the, some of our mutual issues and, and reach some of our mutual goals. So that, that's the situation in, in Washoe County with our, with our, our allocations, and we do really appreciate the work of the committee. Um, uh, and the way that you looked at our, uh, at all of our scores, um, in a serious way. So thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. I agree with what she said. Okay, any final thoughts from the committee? Seeing none, I'm going to go to public comment on this item. So again, to participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov. In the calendar, click on APC Meeting, March 12, 2025. There you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. And if any member of the public wishes to address the APC on this item, please either come to the podium if you're in the room or raise your hand now by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing *9 on your phone. You'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. Any members in the room? Seeing none, we will go to public comment on item five A for Zoom participants.
Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised to comment.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. I'll close public comment. And any final thoughts before we entertain our first motion? We have two motions to make on this item. Okay, I think we're ready for the motions. If anyone would care to make motion one, it's up on the screen.
Make a motion.
Okay, Crystal, go ahead.
Make a motion to recommend the governing board approve the release of 520 residential allocations for the next four years in accordance with TRPA Code's section 50.4.2, as reflected in the attached resolution, attachment A.
Okay, got a motion by Crystal, a second by Mr. Hitchcock. Any questions on the motion? Okay, Tracy, we'll do a roll call vote on motion one, please.
Mr. Judge?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Drew? Ms. Stoller?
Yeah.
Ms. Seiber?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Looks like he may have dropped off.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Anyone care to make motion number two?
Second one again.
Thank you, Crystal.
I make a motion to recommend the governing board approve the proposed distribution of residential allocations for 2025 and 2026 to the local jurisdictions as reflected in the attached resolution, attachment A.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Jacobson, a second by Mr. Hitchcock, and we will take a roll call vote on motion number two, please.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Ms. Seiber?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Drew? Oh, sorry, forgot about that. Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Carr, excuse me.
Correct.
Okay, let me gather myself. Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Judge? Did you repeat that, Mr. Judge?
Yes, approved.
Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Ferry?
Yes.
That motion also passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you all. Thank you, Tiffany. And that's going to governing board next month?
It's actually going this month.
Oh, great. Oh, great.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, that closes item 5A and we'll go on to item 5B. Here comes Mr. Seegan. Perfect. So item 5B is the release of the draft 2023 threshold evaluation. Staff will lead a discussion designed to solicit feedback on the threshold evaluation, including successes, areas of concern, and initial recommendations for going forward. Members of the public may choose to observe or contribute suggestions via an online form, which is posted to the website at trpa.gov. Click on meeting materials and then March 12, 2025 APC meeting. And staff will also put the link to that document in the Zoom chat. No formal action will be taken on this item, although staff is looking for general feedback from this commission and the public. While it's informational only, public comment will be heard after the discussion at the end of this item. Information on this can be found on page 103 of your packet. And I'm going to pass this to Mr. Seegan and Ms. Carringer, who will help us facilitate the discussion. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Dan Seegan, TRPA. It's my pleasure to tee up the discussion that Brendan just said we were going to have by presenting to you an overview of the draft findings of the 2023 threshold evaluation. And just in case you're wondering why we're talking about the 2023 evaluation at the start of 2025, the evaluation is named after the year through which it includes the full year of data through. So the 23 evaluation includes data through the end of the year of 2023. It's compiled in 2024 and then released shortly thereafter. Next slide, please. So none of us would be sitting here today if the region didn't have a long history of development. We know that development started with the discovery of minerals in the region and the Comstock load and continued really in that post-Olympic period when the nation remembered that Tahoe existed and decided that they wanted to visit and live here. Next slide, please. And with that development, there were significant environmental impacts, as many of you are probably aware. The lake famously lost much of its clarity, the forests were nearly clear cut. We had declining wildlife species, notably our raptor populations crashed decades ago. And that environmental impact and the impact of that development raised the concern of many. Next slide, please. To the point that the two states and the federal government decided they wanted to try something new. And that was an environmental by-state compact. So by-state compacts are agreements between two states in which each of the states cedes a little bit of its authority to the other, to the other state for decision-making. So these are frequently done when you want to build a bridge between two states and you want to manage the revenue from that bridge. But Tahoe is a little bit unique in that it was the first time the two states, or two states approached the federal government and said, we want to do this for environmental planning purposes. And we want to break away from the existing boundaries which guide our decision-making and we want to manage this region on a watershed boundary. And so the two states and the feds signed off on that. And here we are today. Next slide, please. The signing of the by-state compact did not immediately improve conditions in the Tahoe region. So Lake Clarity is probably one of the things the region is most widely known for. In the first decade after the compact was signed, we continued to lose over a foot of clarity a year. Next slide, please. And so the powers that be decided to revisit that by-state compact and both modify its implementation as well as they designed this thing called environmental threshold carrying capacities, which we today refer to as threshold standards. And what they really are is broad goals for the region and ways for people outside the region or those that are not in this room every day making decisions to swoop in every now and then and say, how well are we doing? So this is Congress and the two states intent to direct the agency and its partners to identify those goals so that they could check up on how well we are doing in achieving those goals. And so that's in 1980 that the compact is revised to insert this notion and the year, and the agency and its partners are given a little over a year to establish the first set of threshold standards. Next slide, please. Is that my eyes or is this slide blurry? Okay. That's good. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. So the compact also establishes the role of these threshold standards within our system, blurry or not. And it establishes those threshold standards at the very top of our system. So the threshold standards are these broad goals and we are supposed to do everything to attain those goals. So the regional plan that we develop and maintain, that's designed to achieve those standards. The code of ordinances which implement the regional plan, also oriented towards threshold attainment. And then the findings we make every time we approve a project in the region need to say, this project will not cause our threshold standards to be exceeded. So everything needs to be consistent with these broad goals. Next slide, please. And we have about 140 of these threshold standards today in, organized into 10 different categories. From air quality to our recreation experience, to our scenic resources, to wildlife fisheries, they run the gamut. Next slide, please. And in order to achieve and maintain those threshold standards after they're adopted, the agency and its partners set out to develop the first regional plan, which was deemed to be protective of the region. So there was prior regional plans that many had sued over, including the state of California, because it would not be protective of the Tahoe region. If you want to take yourself further back into history, when the compact was originally signed, the plans were that Tahoe would house about 750,000 people. That, that was the plan for our region. So it was going to be a grand city on the hill equivalent to San Francisco, but high up on a lake. And so the, the regional plan in 1987 was, was the first regional plan that placed overall caps on the development in our region as well as precluded new subdivisions within our region. So you had this real emphasis on reducing the overall development capacity. So as you're probably aware, the development capacity of the region today is a little over 50,000 residential homes, nowhere near enough to house 750,000 people. We have a little over 10,000 hotel motel units in the region and it also limited commercial floor area. At the same time, the region and its partners were working on developing these development controls to prevent fu- future environmental degradation. The two states and the federal government were busy actively acquiring land within our region because they feared that the regional plan would not be successful in preventing further environmental degradation. So you have this coordinated effort where the federal government is investing in land acquisition. The two states backed by voters in each of those states who had similar concerns are also acquiring land within the region. And collectively at this end, at the end of this period, you have both strict development controls within our region and a vast increase in public ownership within our region. Next slide, please. And the story of that is that it helped a little bit. So we were in the period prior to these development controls and land acquisition, we're losing about a little over a foot of clarity. That gets decreased almost in half. So in that next period, we're losing about a little under three quarters of foot of clarity a year. And here we use clarity as a broad surrogate for environmental quality within our region. It's clearly not our only goal. Next slide, please. But clearly losing three quarters of feet of clarity a year is not our broad goal. And the threshold evaluation of 1997 really highlighted that more needed to be done. That development controls and land acquisition were not going to be enough to right the wrongs of the past and that we needed a broad effort to restore past environmental harm. And with the first Tahoe summit, the Environmental Improvement Program was born. And you can think of the Environmental Improvement Program as the active complement to the development controls. So the regional plan prevents further degradation and the environmental improvement goes and restores past environmental degradation. Next slide, please. And that is fundamentally the framework through which we achieve threshold standards and through which we expect to achieve and maintain them. So the regional plan and the Environmental Improvement Program work together to collaboratively drive threshold progress in all 10 categories. Next slide, please. So with that, I'll give you a quick overview of the evaluation. Next slide. So this is our eighth threshold evaluation. We used to do them every five years. We have since started, since 2012, we started doing them every four years. The first six of those evaluations were long paper reports. 2011 and 2015 each numbered over 1,000 pages. And more recently, we've tried to make those reports more accessible to the general public and more useful to you. And we have put those online. And the last two in 2019, 2023 are the, our first two attempts to do that. Next slide, please. The purpose of this threshold evaluation is the check part of our adaptive management cycle. So we here operate on the plan, do, check, adjust. So the regional plan and implementation of the regional plan as well as setting EIP priorities are how we plan and then implement. We're now in that part of the process where we're seeing how we did, how well did we execute our plans and how good were our plants? Next slide, please. And so if you're wondering how well we did, you can pull up ltinfo.org. You can go to the threshold dashboard, that's going to be one of the things. And you can highlight any of the 10 threshold categories to find the individual indicators that are evaluated here. Next slide, please. When you click down into each of those, you'll see something that looks a little bit like a mini scientific paper on each of them. So it will contain some data, it will contain a description of what the standard is and why we have that standard. It will, probably most importantly for many, it will contain a arrow or an icon suggesting which direction we are headed and a colored traffic light to let you know how we are doing. Uh, next slide. So as with most systems, green is good, yellow and red are bad. So the, the two green colors there suggest that we are in attainment. The yellow and red suggests that we are out of attainment. Maybe more importantly than in or out of attainment are the arrows suggesting direction. I would caution you over interpreting the current status because often these goals that we establish for ourselves are long-term goals. You can think of restoring old growth on our landscape. We don't expect to achieve that for another 60 or 70 years. Same thing with our Lake Clarity target. There are broad programs for implementation that occur over decades and decades. So most important for many of those is, are we trending in the right direction? Next slide, please. So you'll also, you'll scroll down on that page and you'll see links to other parts of our reporting platform. So notably, the Environmental Improvement Program Partners report everything that they do over the course of the year. This is one of those reports that we send to Congress annually. It's highlighted at the summit. All of that information is linked on this dashboard here through those EIP indicators. You'll also see example projects for each threshold standard as well as information on the monitoring program we use to collect information and then report out to you. Next slide, please. And when I say we there, I am using the royal we here. Most of you know the agency's budget is not sufficient to cover monitoring for many of the threshold standards. And we are entirely reliant on the monitoring programs of partners for numerous standards here. So I always like to highlight all the contributions that many of the agencies and organizations that you in the room represent to actually pull this report together. Next slide, please. One specific thing I also want to highlight in this report is the work of the Tahoe Science Advisory Council, which organized an independent peer review of this report. So the Science Advisory Council contracted with 10 external experts that reviewed the individual parts of the report and provided us feedback on what we did well, what we did not do well, and what we need to change. So you will see online, if you're looking at the report, you can click in, there's a summary of their peer review that's about two or three pages long. Then there's about 60 pages of peer review comments that the reviewers provided us. And if you want to get even deeper, you can look to, look at our response to their comments and see how we modified the report that you are seeing today in response to the guidance that we received from the peer reviewers. Next slide, please. So what does the report actually say? That was a long tee up. Uh, next slide. So at the highest level, we were able to evaluate the status of 112 of the 140 standards. Nearly 80% of those are in attainment, 24 out of attainment. We've received numerous questions about standards for which no status determination was possible. That's the, the 28 standards are about 20% of the overall standards. Primarily those fit into two categories. So they're, the most numerous of those are standards without a defined endpoint. So you'll remember many of our standards date back to the early 1980s. And especially in things like the water quality section, we have numerous standards that say, reduce nitrogen load until X is achieved, Lake Clarity or nearshore Algo group or nearshore clarity. For each of those that have no defined endpoint, the practice within the report is to not reach a status determination because there is no defined endpoint for that. That's one group of the standards that we were unable to identify our status relative to. The other group is those for which we do not have sufficient monitoring data. So monitoring resources due of both TRPA and its partners are not sufficient to monitor every individual indicator. And so there are numerous, numerous which are not. The most frequent of those is actually within our noise category and deals with single event noise. And if you're very interested, I'm happy to go into more detail there. The next part of the, the thing is, so how many are entertainment and then what's the trend? So the vast majority of ours of the trend is little or no change. If you're looking down another level, improving indicators outnumber declining. But we'll probably focus more on declining within our conversation today. If you're concerned about little to no change, I would remind you to click into each of the individual indicators for which you're interested in because often the goal is little to no change. So within environmental management and when the first threshold standards were adopted, many of them were for no degradation. So we were in this period of rapid environmental decline. We were worried about for few, the future, excuse me, loss of environmental quality. And so many of our standards say things like prevent further decline of streams and meadows, which we colloquially call stream environment zones within our region. So the goal there is actually little to no change. Next slide, please. So what did the evaluation actually say? So one of the big highlights of this evaluation was the overall impact of wildfires on not just air quality in the forest within our region, but on numerous categories. So you'll see wildfires impacted, or wildfires impact highlighted in many areas within our valuation. It was apparent in our stream environment zone monitoring. It was apparent in the soil monitoring, it was apparent in scenic and in the wildlife impacts. Next slide, please. I want to talk a little bit about the impact of wildfire on air quality in the region because I think it's one of the more dramatic shifts within our evaluation. So if you are a student of the threshold evaluation process, you'll remember that years and years ago, I believe this is from the 2001 threshold evaluation, it was very common for our air quality indicators to be out of attainment. And the primary reason for that was exhaust from automobiles within our region. Automobiles, as you probably know, have gotten far cleaner and we've actually gotten better at moving people around within our region. And so in the last couple of evaluations, nearly every air quality indicator has been in attainment. Really good sign for long-term air quality improvement within our region. Next slide, please. That however, masks a larger trend that became apparent during this evaluation, which was that while our ambient ambient air quality within the region is generally quite good and continues to improve. So these are annual average conditions. They're continuing to improve within our region. If you are looking at the short-term air quality indicators, there are dramatic periods that are associated with wildfires where air quality is quite poor within our region. So that's a that headline is from, you know, the summer of COVID when life was already bad. And CNN had to highlight that we had the worst air quality in the nation during that period. And there were numerous days. So this and this evaluation actually, thanks to a peer reviewer includes analysis of the short-term air quality indicators. This is one hour, eight hour and twenty-four hour air quality indicators, both with and without days impacted by wildfire. The status determinations are based on without, however, the trend determinations are include those days. And they clearly highlighted decline in these short-term air quality indicators. Next slide, please. So many of you are probably aware, we adopted a new transportation and commit sustainable communities threshold standard a couple of years back to reduce the total amount of driving within our region that all of us have to do. We saw with it, so that that standard was supposed to take about twenty-five years to attain. As a result, we believe of COVID and larger declines in vehicle miles traveled in both states. That standard is in attainment in this evaluation. If you read the evaluation closely, while while Garth is copying, we also applauded ourselves, but there there's cautionary words because the the impacts of COVID, COVID clearly disrupted all aspects of our lives. And the reductions in VMT have slowly creeped back to pre-COVID levels in Nevada. California still remains below both in Tahoe and statewide. But we we caution against overinterpreting that it was us that were responsible for that success and highlight the need to continue to implement the programs that get people out of their cars. Next slide, please. Aquatic invasive species. So really two different stories here. One, a major success and one a really a cautionary tale and additional challenge. So the first I wanted to highlight, so we adopted new standards for aquatic invasive species and aquatic invasive species control in the past four years. So we have two standards that establish firm measurable goals for aquatic invasive species control within our region now. Prior to that, we just had these ambiguous standards. So for the first time, we're able to say that we are not entertainment rather than no status determination. Potentially bad, but if you read the evaluation, you'll also see there's a dramatic increase in the amount of control work going on within our region. And notably, the controlled methods test within the keys tackling one of the biggest infestations within our region. You're also probably aware that for the first time since we've had a boat inspection program, we have a new aquatic invader within our lake. New Zealand mud snails were discovered as part of survey work for aquatic invasive plants within our region. And as a result, we implemented numerous new controls on non-motorized motor crafts to try to bring that program up to the level of motor motorized, motorized prevention. Next slide, please. Wouldn't be complete without talking about clarity. And so we talked about the first period prior to by state collective management, we were losing a foot a little over a foot of clarity a year. That dropped back during that next period. And post-environmental improvement program, we are losing a little bit under a tenth of a foot of clarity a year. So it's actually not even statistically significant, the loss today. But that doesn't mean where where we want to be. Next slide, please. And notably, one of the things that emerged in the last couple of years and is highlighted in this evaluation is that clarity loss and clarity impacts really have a bifurcation by season. So this slide, if you're orienting yourself, the up is actually bad. We want clarity to be towards the bottom of the graph and practice for displaying clarity graphs is that the higher numbers are at the bottom. So the orange line there is the trend in long-term summer clarity. And basically what you see is an unmitigated decline there. It continues to go down. While winter clarity, we have broken that trend and potentially are at a stage where we're starting to see some improvement. So it's responding to all the things we are doing in ways that summer clarity is not. And that's launched a whole new research and investigation by our science community to better understand why summer clarity is not responding to load reduction. Is there some ecological factor that we overlooked? Is there some internal lake dynamic that is impacting the summer that's not impacting the winter? So you'll likely see more about that in the years to come. Next slide, please. And I wanted to end at least the summary on a high note. And this is something I believe many of us have talked about before. But in this evaluation, we highlight that we achieved a milestone. So in the first round of threshold standards, we set about to restore eleven hundred acres of stream environment zones that had been disturbed, developed or subdivided. That is over forty years ago. The partners recently achieved that milestone and potentially overachieved that milestone, depending on which accounting system you look at. So we celebrate that accomplishment within this evaluation. That accomplishment was years in the making. Over sixty partners implemented SEZ restoration projects that are counted towards that overall goal. Some of the notable ones are highlighted on the screen. And in typical Tahoe fashion, as many of you probably know, on the eve of achieving that, we actually just set a new goal for ourselves. So you'll see a new SEZ restoration goal within this evaluation that is yellow. It's out of attainment because it's a goal that we expect to take another twenty, twenty-five years to achieve. Next slide, please. So that sort of tees up where we want to go from here. So the report is this checkpoint, how are we doing? But the real work of the report is not in actually producing that check. It's in what you do afterwards in order to adjust what we are doing in response to that report. Next slide, please. And really what that means is how do we want to adjust our regional plan? How do we want to adjust the priorities of the environmental improvement program to make progress in those areas where we're not seeing the progress that we want to see? And that's really the task at hand today. Next slide, please. And I want to, prior to turning it over to Kim to tee up that discussion, I would just like to highlight that change here really is possible. And we've done it in the past and we should continue to strive forward in the future. So I'm going to use a couple of examples of how the threshold evaluation report was used to drive future progress. So the threshold of report of two thousand one highlighted this dramatic decline in shoreline scenic quality. So this is if you're paddling around the lake, swimming or boating in the lake and you're looking back at the shore. What's the quality of that, the scenic view? And if you're familiar with our scenic system, the overall goal is that you see an undeveloped shoreline, an undeveloped landscape. We want to minimize sort of the the visibility of human structures as much as possible. And you can see in those first four evaluations here, there's a pretty obvious decline. And so what that means is more and more structures were being built that were highly visible and they're eroding the quality of the scenic experience in that area. And it was highlighted in that evaluation. Next slide, please. And so in response to that, this group and the governing board developed a new way to review shoreline projects that were coming in the door that emphasized reducing the overall mass and visibility. And this is just a single example of how that actually gets implemented. So as people come in the door with new projects and you have a before on top and after below, the emphasis is on reducing the overall structure, removing those rock rock crib peers. And as those projects come in the door and get implemented, you see improvements in scenic quality. Next slide, please. And those improvements are probably not as fast as we would like because they take an applicant coming in the door that's willing to actually implement the project. But there is this slow, steady improvement as people come in the door of shoreline scenic quality. So that's one example. Next slide, please. Another example from two thousand eleven was guiding how we approach AAS management within our lake. And the two thousand eleven evaluation basically highlighted that we didn't have a broad view of what was happening in our lake. We knew about some of the individual infestations, but we didn't have anything, any idea of what was going on in between those. And the evaluation recommended that we develop this full lake monitoring program. Next slide, please. And so we worked, and and I say we again here, this this work is funded by NDP, Lahan, TRPA, implemented by TRCD, MTS and other partners. So again, it's a broad effort here. But we implemented that lakewide monitoring program in two thousand eighteen. We used it to develop our specific and measurable targets for aquatic invasive plant control within our lake. And you can see that within this evaluation today that we now have that information and use it to guide AAS planning and project implementation going forward. So another instance where this group in response to the threshold evaluation highlighted needs and then the region responded to those those needs and changed what it was doing. Next slide, please. With that, I'd like to thank you for your attention. A little plug for you to go in and read the full evaluation or at least the indicators that you are most interested in. Before I turn it over to Kim, I will ask if there are any questions that you have of me related to not the priority setting, but the report itself. Next slide, I think it says that on the next slide. Yeah.
Perfect. Good job, Dan. As always, thank you so much. Very interesting history and great to check in on where we're at. So just questions on the report or anything that Dan said, let's not get into the discussion piece yet. So Miss Cyber and then Miss Carr.
Yeah, not so much a question, but just maybe a little addition to your actually very interesting introduction. I I actually really appreciated that and learned a few things. I was just trying to imagine Tahoe with seven hundred fifty thousand people in it. But you mentioned the Santini Burton program and I just wanted to mention that that is still something that is ongoing. And that the Lake Tahoe Basin Forest Service is one of the only areas around the United States Forest Service or any federal agency for that matter that is actively acquiring land. And so, you know, I think folks have some pretty good examples, but like you know, Flume Trail, that 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 piece of the parcel along the Flume Trail up in Incline is probably one of the more notable recent additions. But I just wanted to mention that 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 is still ongoing, although it is, you know, definitely slowed down from the Santini Burton heyday when plots come available that meet the criteria in the Santini Burton Act. Then we are, we are acting on those when when possible. So thanks.
Yeah, we thank you for that. Uh, Miss Carr.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, on the air quality one, I I apologize if I was thinking and not hearing. If you remove the smoke days, our air quality is doing okay. Is that the is that a safe statement that the air quality is actually not, it's reasonable except for when there are things out of our control.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Young.
Hi, I um, I don't have any comments on the the data, so to speak, but I did want to say how much I appreciate Lake Tahoe Info. And it's not just a matter of saving paper when this switched over to the online platform. That platform is really just incredibly useful and it's really well done and putting the the evaluation online on the Lake Tahoe info like it is, is it it's so transparent, it really helps me because I can point to it. I can suggest people go look at it. It it's just, it's been really great seeing it move over to that, other than like you said, thousands of pages. But it's it's more than just saving paper. It really is a spectacular way to present the information and to invite people to look at what you're doing. So I really, I just want to let you know how much I appreciate that that format and anything you can do to continue approving it is is I'm on board with. So thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Agreed. Yeah, Robert.
Thank you so much for the presentation. And I I noticed in the report itself, there wasn't the annual clarity trend graph. There's the one highlighting the difference between the summer and winter clarity. And I think in in a summary report, a lot of us have have seen that the annual trend one. So that might be good to include in the report also. And I haven't been to the online version yet, but we'll be looking forward to spending hours or days on that.
Great. Thanks, Robert. Any final questions for Dan before we go to Kim? Oh, yeah. Sorry, Garth.
Dan, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. Question for you, the the pie chart that you had on one of the slides showing the little to no change in some of the thresholds, how does how does that in this threshold evaluation compare to past threshold evaluations?
Dan, see again, it's very similar. So both the number of standards in attainment as well as the overall trend are fairly static through time.
So you're saying there's hope?
I'm saying there is hope, yes.
And along those lines, there was a pretty good public comment about thresholds where there was insufficient data or or no attainment. You know, status was reached and you highlighted that, but is that fundamentally one of the goals of this process is to try to at least be able to reach a status call on all thresholds?
Dan, see it again. Yes, that is the goal. And I would highlight the work both to of the evaluation and to update the threshold standards is how we achieve that. So in the two thousand nineteen, the last evaluation, we had seven AAS standards for which there was no defined endpoint. They read something to the effect of reduce ecological impacts of AAS, reduce social or reduce economic impacts. And the convention that we follow is where there is no defined impact, we say, or sorry, no defined endpoint. The convention is that we say no status determination. And the updates that we did to the standards earlier in the year replaced those standards with specific and measurable targets for aquatic invasive plant management, both within the lake and in the Tahoe Keys. So that we've transitioned from standards that were not measurable to two standards. Unfortunately, both are out of attainment, but that's, you know, you're setting long-term goals but for which a status determination was possible. And ideally through this process, we would like to actually reach status determinations on every one of our standards.
And part of that is the kind of the two-way swing process of updating all the threshold standards, right? Which is ongoing.
Correct.
Okay, great. Yeah, Miss Carr.
I just wanted to add to that response as well. And, you know, it's it's fantastic when we can shift to thresholds that are specific and measurable. But we also need to be aware that measurable takes funding and not all measurements are funded. And so there could just be a lack of data just because there's not a resource to collect that data.
It's a good point. And it's good to have, you know, there's like with some of these are more like as the older thresholds are like aspirational statements almost. So do those go somewhere? Do those become like vision statements or? So do those go somewhere? Do those become like vision statements or like something?
So it varies by category. Many of those vision statements are actually adopted within the regional plan. So the original set of threshold standards predated the original plan and were often designed to provide guidance for the agency in developing the regional plan. So as you're, you're probably all aware, the regional plan has goals and then policies that implement those goals and then the code that implements those policies. And so many of those aspirational statements are included in the goals of the regional plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
John Hester, if I could add to that. You may or may not know that the most recent version of the regional plan, after Dan updated the VMT threshold, actually, we put it together into one document called Threshold Standards and Regional Plan. And we've been talking about, and I don't want to lead you into a recommendation that you may or may not want to make, but we have been talking about how could we better link the threshold, the goals and policies and the code sections together so that people see when I'm doing some, something in response to a regulation, I can see a line of sight back up to goals and policies and the threshold standard.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. Before we go to Robert, I see Mr. Drake, you have your hand up? Go ahead, Kevin.
Thanks. Great presentation, Dan. On the water quality side, I mean, this is the on, the summer, the decline in summer clarity is, is ongoing. What, without getting too deep into weeds, what, what do we know today to be the number one or maybe the top two drivers of clarity decline for summertime?
Dan Seagan again, I don't know that we know. I can give you the, the top two areas of scientific inquiry in order to explain that. And I think that the top two theories really relate to ecological change within the lake, which I would group both in two parts. So there is potential changes to the food web within the lake and the natural filters within that food lake. So we've had a decline of species that would naturally clean out particles within our water column. We've also had a shift in the dominant algal type, especially within our summer species or within the summer period in the lake that could also be impairing clarity during that season. So that's sort of one suite of hypotheses that are centered around ecological changes. The second is grouped around physical changes within the lake, primarily related to warming and additional stratification of our water column and the impact that that has. So a, as you are probably aware, the temperature and the temperature difference really between water that's coming into the lake and water within the lake itself dictates what happens to the particles as they arrive in our lake. The deeper waters of our lake are far clearer than the surface waters of our lake. They have far fewer particles. And the warmer conditions, especially when summer, the onset of snowmelt or when snowmelt arrives that is particle heavy, if that is not cooler than the water within the lake or if the lake is stratified and is sort of holding the higher parts of the water column on top, then you have this condition where particles stay on top for longer periods of time rather than plunging into the depths of the lake. And the idea is that that, or the, one of the theories is that that is continuing to impair clarity, especially within the summer season and prior to when our lake mixes, which generally occurs over the winter months during the cold windy temperatures.
Fascinating.
Thanks for that. I guess, is there a document that lays out the kind of key assumptions? Like, well, I guess this is a broader statement. There's always a lot more that we don't know than what we actually know about how these systems work. And I know over the years, having been involved in it a long time ago, we've done our best to document assumptions and say, okay, these are the, these are the relationships, whether it's water quality or, you know, noise, wildlife, other things. I mean, some of them are a little simpler, more form-based. Others are processes and systems that are really, really complex. And there's always limited funding to do research, limited funding to do the right type of monitoring and measurement. Is the, the Tahoe Science Consortium, or whatever the, the new name of the group is today, are they the ones defining kind of the key assumptions and call them hypotheses by threshold? I guess I'm kind of getting at the scientific inquiry part. How are we improving our understanding of how to achieve thresholds? Because the thresholds at the end of the day are the measurement of the final result or the output. And I think I'm always curious, working upstream, what are the key assumptions we're making? Are they the right assumptions? What are we testing to close the gap between actions and results?
Dan Seagan again, TRPA. So it's a really good question. The, the key assumptions and relative confidence in those are, there's a great document at the end of the Total Maximum Daily Load that highlights those key assumptions. That's, you know, nearly 15 years old now. There is on the Tahoe Science Advisory Council webpage, you can see there's numerous documents that outline updates to that and where that community thinks that we should be investing in additional research. I would also highlight, if they're not up there yet, the, so these discussions related to summer clarity, as you might imagine, have been going on for some time. So we've had the benefit of allocating SNPLMA, excuse me, Southern Nevada, Southern Nevada Public Land Management Act dollars to the science community to study both the ecological change theory as well as the physical change theory. And those reports are either, they're in draft form right now and will likely be on the Science Council website within the next couple of months, certainly within the, the next half year. So you'll see initial reports on each of those.
Thanks for those questions, Kevin.
Thanks.
Robert, do you have one last thing? And then we'll go over to Kim.
Okay. I know there's not going to be a threshold like on lake water temperature, but it might be in some of the reports, maybe a graph of that might be useful because there's some sense that that might have an impact on the clarity. And then even though, yeah, we can't set a threshold for that, that might be useful. On the SEC stuff, thank you again for adopting new standards that look on the quality of the SEC function. I think that'll be helpful. I'll try to look into that. The, maybe a confirmation, I, I, I used to work for some agencies where we would restore an area and then we'd have to come back and restore it again. So it might be useful to confirm that in terms of the acreage restored, that you're only single counting those acreages for, as being restored once, and then there may be further improvements on it, but that might, I, I'm, I'm sure you probably have done that, but it might be good to highlight that. All right, thank you.
I just want to highlight, so the, on the resilience dashboard, there's, excuse me, Dan Seagan again, on the resilience dashboard there, which is linked to from the threshold dashboard, we do include the graph of the temperature of the lake. So that you'll see linked on there. And the, the notion of double counting was something that we had a lot of discussion on during the update of the Stream Environment Zone Standard. There was also the notion of non-counting that, so we had, you know, so we don't count or we didn't count historically enhancement or the contributions of enhancement. And there was numerous projects that actually have become, I think, more frequent in recent years where projects that would fall short of the definition of restoration were not counted towards the threshold standard. So when we do the full accounting of actual acres enhanced or restored, it's well over 2,500 acres. And part of the update was to acknowledge and both, and include within our threshold accounting that work and the contributions to improved environmental quality from projects that fell short of the definition of restoration, but are still improving quality.
One follow-up, Robert Erlich again. Is there, again, folks who do EIP projects will come forward and say, here's a project we've done and you'll evaluate it for enhancement or restoration. Is there a mechanism to look at SEZs that are not involved in any projects to find out if in fact they are maintaining their status or some of those might be degrading? So is there a way that you're keeping track of over time, here's a, here's an SEZ that's not functioning as well? No one has done a project there, but I don't know if there's funding or anything to, a, a program to look at other SEZs aren't included in EIP projects?
It's a good question. Dan Seagan again. So part of the update of the SEZ standard was actually implementing a monitoring program that visits all SEZs within the region over the course of four or five years to track ongoing condition. We modified that slightly in the aftermath of the Caldor Fire to visit those sites in the aftermath so we could assess change both then and then the recovery thereafter. But that's implemented both by TRPA and other partners. And then that are randomly or visiting sites that are not subject to restoration efforts. And then partners that are restoring sites do post surveys after the restoration effort to provide scores and that goes into the updated score.
Thank you, Robert and Dan. Ashley, is this a question for Dan or should, we do have a whole nother exercise that's coming? Yeah, I think it might be good to transition because Kim's going to lead us and I'm going to help and Dan's going to help through a little facilitated discussion. TRPA is looking for some key components of feedback in this process. And so Kim's going to help us through, we sort of have three prompts that we should be thinking about. This was in the information. So we're going to try to run through those in some orderly fashion. We do want to hear from ideally all the APC members on input on this particular section. And so Kim, do you want to pick it up from there?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, Kim Caranger here with TRPA. That was a great setup and I, I've enjoyed the conversation so far. I love digging into this report and I hope to hear even more from you in this next exercise. I just have a couple of slides to set us up, if I can go to the next slide, next one. So I want to take you back to about a year ago at the TRPA Governing Board Strategic Planning Session back in 2024, when we knew the threshold evaluation was coming out this year and staff are getting it all together. We are working with partners, there's a ton of work that goes into this report. We wanted, we talked about how do we make sure this report, that there's, that there's time set aside to really reflect on what it says? Get feedback from the Commission, from our board members, from the public, from our partners on what it really means for our work and how it informs our work going forward. So that's what we've set up. It's a little bit different than we've done before for our threshold evaluations. A little more process for engagement. And it just started last month. I'll go through a timeline. But our goals are, like I said, to engage everyone, get a wide range of perspectives on what the report said and what we should do with the information going forward. So we've actually come up with a process where we want to respond formally to the evaluation with recommendations. We'll summarize a lot of the feedback we've got and come back with recommendations on how we take it forward. Next slide. A general outline of what that recommendations report will look like is kind of what we've already started talking about here today. What are the key takeaways that you all took from the report? What are the big accomplishments that we should note that we've accomplished over the last four years or, or leading up to the last four years? Like, what should we be really proud of as far as implementation of the regional plan, the EIP? And how we're, how we're doing? Very important on areas of concern, what areas need further attention and problem solving? Like Mrs. Carr mentioned, we only have so much funding. It takes funding to put into monitoring, to implementation, to EIP projects, to updating our regulations. Are, are we focused in the right areas? And do we need to look at our resources and make sure they're allocated appropriately? Or do we need to try to find more resources for something? This is a good time to look at that. What should our priorities be for the next four years? When we're at our next threshold evaluation four years from now? What do we want to make sure we're focusing on to continue progress and the trends going in the right direction? We talked a little bit about this, the threshold update. We've updated a suite of about 23, I want to say was last year. What's the, what's most important for the next set of updates? That we want to achieve those numeric targets that are measurable, that goal to getting them all to a measurable state so we can call trends on them. And lastly, recommendations specifically for TRPA and our, and the partnership as a whole in the Environmental Improvement Program and everyone working together in the basin. What's our recommendations together of what we should be focusing on for the next four years and beyond? Next slide. So here's a timeline of the process we're looking at. We just debuted the threshold evaluation at the end of February at our governing board meeting. And in that exercise, we actually did it a little bit different and we did breakout groups. We had two breakout groups of the governing board members. We had a public breakout group to go through some of the exercise that we're going to do today. We decided today to just do it in one group. I think it's easier for this format. It's a little bit smaller. So we just kicked it off last month. We're here this month. We'll also bring it back to our governing board, Environmental Improvement Committee next month, or I'm sorry, this month. We'll take all of the feedback and initial kind of recommendations report into April where we'll be back at our strategic planning retreat for the governing board and start to reflect on what it says and start to develop recommendations. We'll be drafting the recommendations report again for feedback in May and finalizing it in June. And that coincides with finalizing the threshold evaluation itself and where we like to put out our work plan for the next year. And throughout this process, we want public engagement and we'll find ways. We've been contacting local community groups or people that have provided public comment already to see if they would like a presentation on the TVAL themselves and have more time to give feedbacks. We're finding a lot of different ways we can engage with the community there. And all of that again culminates through the next couple of months into June. Next slide. So what we're hoping to hear from you all today, like the, it, it coincides with those, the outline of the recommendations report. What are you, what are you proud of and that we should note as far as progress that we've seen from the report? We'll facilitate this discussion and we'll try to hear from everyone. Try to pick like your top thing. You could even do two if you'd like. What are your top two areas of concern that we either need more information on? You would like more discussion on or that we should think about focusing on in the next few months as we develop these recommendations? And then looking forward, what is, what's one thing you think should be a focus for TRPA on the next four years based on what you've seen in the evaluation? And what are your current priorities for advancing the regional plan goals and threshold attainment? And again, I know a lot of you have just started digging in. And as Robert said, you want to spend days and hours more on the report. There's a lot in there. So this is initial thoughts, takeaways. There'll be more time. We'll be coming back on, on things to continue to get feedback. So just starting the conversation today. And I think the chair is going to help me facilitate and I'm going to actually document on these flip charts here, the, these three categories. And one last thing, Mr. Chair, I, we do have an opportunity for public comment after this item. And we've put together a, a Google sheet that asks for public feedback on these three areas as well. So it'll be put in the chat where they can actually enter in feedback for these categories as well. So I will finish there.
Thank you, Kim, for that tee up. So you can see on the screen, we had, kind of have these three buckets. And Kim and I talked, is it better to stay rigid and just go, all right, everyone answer number one. Now everyone answer number two. And maybe sometimes we don't work as well that way. So I think, you know, I think we can be a little flexible here and build off of each other. Again, Kim and company are looking for our feedback on this. So I'm going to try to help us move through this. There's, there's obviously quite a few of us and, and quite a few areas here. So let's try to be on point. And I can, Ms. Cyber, you had your hand up earlier, so maybe we'll just start with you.
Okay, really quickly, if I could start with a question related to the, the form that you were talking about, Kim? Is that going to be available like for a certain time period or just during this meeting now? Or, you know, if, if interested members of the public, like, could we forward that to them or anything? Like, how long is that going to be?
Kim Caranger, for the record, great question. It will be available. It's, it's, there's a link on our website that will be up through the next couple of months during the process. So we can send that link out.
Thank you so much.
And that link is live in the chat.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go through these really quickly. What two areas have we made the most progress? You know, Forest Service, we've, we've got a lot of the land and I think that the majority of the SEZ improvements and things like that are occurring on Forest Service. So that's probably, you know, kind of a top one. And then we've also gotten some really, you know, we're getting some of our fuels and vegetation management projects implemented. So I think those would be our top two. Areas of concern, I don't know if it's necessarily related to a threshold and maybe this is more of a question, but just how does sort of the Caldor fire stuff then, you know, impact some of these thresholds? Or how do we accommodate for that in the discussion of the, of the thresholds there? And I don't know if I necessarily have what I, we'd like to see the TRPA focus on in the next four years. But at least sort of, you know, collectively for the Forest Service, our, our priorities are going to continue to be, you know, vegetation management to reduce the risk of wildfire. I think it's just, is going to be our number one priority. And then we are also continuing on our, you know, goal of implementing restoration projects. As well as then, hopefully at some point we'll be able to get a decision on our basin wide trails project. So that would be implementing some of the regional trails priorities for the, for the region. And I think I'll just leave it there. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to come back. I think stuff's going to get, our brains are going to get jarred by others. So. Robert, do you want to jump in next? Or you want me to go to someone else? Okay, Garth, are you ready to jump in?
Yeah, Garth, all in for the record. I, I agree with, with Ashley that the SEZ progress, it's definitely a good accomplishment. And glad that the new threshold has us go above and beyond where we currently are. That's very important. One of the areas of concern for myself is the sensitive plant thresholds specifically for Galena Creek Rock Press. It's a, I think it's stated in here on the, on the website as well that, you know, it's, it's a little nebulous. There's, there's some disagreement whether that species even fully is known to occur within the basin. It's kind of just a big question mark. And so I think some additional focus put in on that one threshold can be, can be helpful because it may be a threshold that's not capable, being that we're not sure if it exists here. Being a biologist priorities, I, I think, yeah, sensitive plants, SEZ and wildlife.
Please, Kim, go ahead.
Kim Carringer, for the record, I'm dynamic duo here with Dan on my facilitating and talking into the mic. I just wanted to add, thank you, Ashley, for adding priorities from the Forest Service. We don't have to have it as just TRPA priorities. We'd love to get that in as EIP partners as well. So thank you for that. And if people want to add, like the SEZ, Garth said, that's, that's also something to highlight as, as an accomplishment. I can start that. You can repeat. That's great info. So just wanted to clarify both of those. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Ms. Carr, are you ready to go or?
I have an initial thought. It was an informational item on the agenda, so I didn't provide myself the grace of time to dig in. So I didn't do any homework. But I really do like the concept that, that was brought up a little bit earlier about kind of crosswalking the, the thresholds with the ordinances with the regional plan and, and helping not just staff, but everyone that comes through the TRPA, whether they're doing a project or they're going to a meeting. Something that helps people understand what they do matters and how it matters. Whether it's a, you know, a construction project or a BMP or whatever. And, and we've, we've talked about that in the, the two, the threshold update standard, uh, working group, tourist week. And, and at the, at the Tahoe Science Advisory Council even more about how thresholds are, are, are not, they're not in any one particular category. They're webbed together. So when you work on something related to, you know, VMT, maybe you're also having a positive effect on noise. I don't know. So the, the webs of thresholds and, and their effects on each other, I think is, is important to understand. So the more we can make those connections for ourselves and for others, I think the better. You know, I, I try to reinforce with my staff at NDP that it doesn't matter what you're doing in the agency, whether you're answering the phone or doing paperwork or processing travel or writing permits or making big management decisions, everybody has a role in what we're doing. And everybody needs to sort of figure out what their connection is to our mission. And I, so I like the concept of helping people understand how maybe what they're doing connects with the mission of the threshold attainment. I'll stop.
I agree. That's good. Hitch, you want to jump in?
Mike. For me, well, being the former city program manager, I mean, the gains that TRPA has made in the scenic resource program has been amazing. And however, this last evaluation shows that there's been little or no change since, looks like what year, from 2011. And some of the concerns, at least from the city's perspective, I see that may affect scenic resources move forward is the, because of wildfire issues in the basin, what you're starting to see now, at least in the built environment, is using materials that, you know, meet our defenseful space standards, which can result in, you know, buildings that are technically not not natural or may not be consistent with the overall natural environment. And I think moving forward here, I think you're going to start seeing some conflicts in that area between what is being built and what the scenic threshold says. And what the local jurisdictions have to do in terms of meter or fuels and, and defenseful space requirements when we're approving projects in the future. And if that's the case, then I can see that you see resource thresholds, you're not going to change at all, or it's going to go downhill. Another suggestion I have, at least for the scenic, scenic threshold, and this has been a frustration for me for many years, one of the scenic program managers, is inherently in urban corridors, one of the metrics that you evaluate is the view of the lake. Inherently in some urban quarters, you don't have the view of the lake. The unit itself gets dinged for not having a view. And from my perspective, I think there has, that at least for the scenic, the roadway threshold standards for urban corridors should be rethought. Yeah, the scenic standard should be, the threshold should be changed and taken into account that, that not all roadway corridors are, you know, should be treated the same because they don't, not all road recorders have views of the lake.
Agreed. Ashley, you have a thought?
Yeah, just a, a quick thought related to the scenic piece. We have our Ruck residence cabins where they are historic cabins and they have to follow, you know, NHPA guidelines and stuff like that. And folks have been coming to us saying, you know, we want to use more firewise types of materials. And we've started, you know, kind of moving towards some of those things. But when you were mentioning that, I was thinking, and maybe this already exists, but if there was a, a resource for people to be able to start, you know, like a compilation of some of these new products that are out there that, you know, sort of TRPA and everybody kind of thinks, you know, these are better products versus everybody going out and putting a metal roof on or, you know, some of these other options, it might be nice to have a resource like that for some of these more firewise things and to get products that are also meeting some of these scenic threshold pieces. And I'd also like to mirror the discussion related to the scenic thresholds and the roadway units, especially for some of the Forest Service stuff. It's pretty difficult to kind of, for us to work through those scenic pieces and especially in, you know, in some of the stuff we do, it's kind of like, you know, we're, we're changing something, you know, very small to maybe something slightly larger and you can see it from the highway there. But sort of the scale of change, I think, is, is one of the pieces too, that is difficult for us to kind of work through in some of these roadway units. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Uh, I'm going to go to APC members online now. So I'll just try to go down my list. But I do see Mr. Young's hand raised. So I'll start with you, Eric. You are muted still, Eric. Eric, you're muted. There you go.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. This is kind of an important opportunity for us and I really appreciate you doing this. In regard to progress and accomplishments, I might say that the, the commitment to this process, the commitment to the concept might be a really big accomplishment. The plan do adjust concept is something that you've really stuck with. The pyramid of the standards on top and everything that comes after that is something that, that is really easy to make a graphic of, but to stick with it for as many years as, as you have and to be committed to it is a real accomplishment and it's something to be proud of. The thing that has made it work is the adjust component. Continually coming back and making an adjustment or setting a new standard, saying, okay, we did that. Let's go further now. So I think that is an accomplishment and it's something to consider. It does lead to my area of concern though, in that it, you want to make sure that you are able to think out of the box to consider new things. Just the, the last few comments about the scenic thresholds, getting those comments and offering us this opportunity to give you those is really important. And, and just that idea that, that we can rethink these things and the commitment to the science over and over again is at once something to be proud of. But it's also a commitment to what we heard earlier. Reevaluating the assumptions constantly, over and over, reevaluating the assumptions. And so those are for progress and accomplishments and areas of concern, they're linked together. I think you've got a lot to be proud of just in terms of sticking with this idea. Constantly coming back, trying to make it better. But one of those ways to make sure it continues to work is reevaluating those assumptions. Then looking forward, I, I don't know to what degree the amount of time and work we put into very specific things on this board and at local jurisdictions really does get linked together and tied together as from his cars comments and others' comments with the public and with staff. I would just point out to the amount of time and effort. All of us on, on both the TRPA side and on the local jurisdiction side have put into the, the housing issue recently of, of the last couple of years. And even more recently, just the last many months, we've all really been working significantly on housing. The Tahoe Living Working Group is really been one of the most active and forward and publicly facing working groups of the TRPA. Most active with local jurisdictions. It's really where we've really been putting in a lot of hours. It would be maybe beneficial and helpful to be able to really point very specifically and directly to that pyramid and how those efforts of what we're doing really relate to the standards and the thresholds and how does this tie together? Why is this so meaningful? Why are we spending all of these hours with it? Because if you don't keep coming back around to that, people start to get their own ideas of why it's important. People start to lose sight of why it's important. They develop arguments against it. And so we're spending so much time on that at a staff level. We should all really be able to very fluidly point to that pyramid and explain why all of those hours are accomplishing these things. So I'd, I'd like, I'd like to be able to do that a little bit better over the next few years. So that, that's my input and I just really appreciate the opportunity and the, and the presentation.
Thanks a lot, Eric. Appreciate it. Mr. Drake, I'm going to go to you next.
All right, thanks. I'd say on the progress and accomplishments, I'll, I'll second the SEZ restoration accomplishment. I think number one, it's important to celebrate accomplishments and we actually hit these measurable targets that we're shooting for that take in some cases decades. So I hope that we can make that well-known to the general public. And I also appreciate SEZ restoration because it's truly one of those investments that generates multiple benefits. It's not just water quality, its habitat. It's scenic to a certain degree. And it actually connects to several different thresholds. When we have a prop, when we have properly functioning SEZ riparian areas. So I think that's a huge win. And I think the other area of progress that I'm most proud of and has been educational for me has been AIS, aquatic invasive species. We've made a ton of progress. We really, as a region, came together to set some priorities and attack that problem head on. And we've made clear and measurable progress. And so I think it's, I'm proud of that. In terms of concerns, I, I think an overarching concern for me is around water quality. It's obviously concern for all of us. We live around this giant lake and the lake's clarity has everything to do with the future of this region. And I guess just tying back to my earlier comment, I, I want to make sure that we are my, my concern, and this is a broad concern, are we taking the right actions, like the right management actions? And are we measuring the right variables effectively? And it's an ongoing conversation and it's, I know we're making adjustments all the time. I guess the underlying question I have is are we willing to, as a, as a science community, as a community of conservation professionals, willing to acknowledge if we are wrong, if we've been measuring the wrong thing even for decades. There's sometimes people have made entire careers out of a certain type of monitoring and get a little embedded in its value. And sometimes if we're seeing data that suggests that we need to move on and try something entirely different, there's, there can be institutional resistance to that. And I just hope that TRPA as the lead agency on a lot of these efforts can make sure that we're honoring the science and in some cases, making some important pivots away from certain things to try new things if we think they yield better information to help us be more effective. So a little bit of just the, the entrenchment that happens when we all invest so much time in a certain way of thinking and, and assumptions around the way things work, especially natural systems like our lake and our streams. And then the other, I'd say area of concern for me is the transportation and sustainable communities threshold area. We didn't talk about it too much today, but I know that there is still a long way to go to refine the way that we even measure VMT. And I think, I know it's an ongoing conversation. I think there's a lot of room for improvement in how we measure and assess VMT and, and then kind of to that point. I, I want to see our, us as a basin and as TRPA as an agency, get more focused on parking management on a basin wide scale. Because we're not going to reuse VMT without fully addressing parking management in a comprehensive way. And then connected to that, we invest a lot in trails and I want to see more focus on investment in moving people outside of vehicles within our town centers. And then in some cases where it makes sense between town centers. I, I love trails in the woods, but I think we spend an awful lot of time building multimillion dollar trails in the woods when we're missing opportunities to make connectivity improvements in our town centers. So I'll continue to beat that drum. And yeah, ultimately a focus on parking management and a focus on connectivity within our town centers allows us to actually And, um, yeah, ultimately, a focus on parking management and a focus on connectivity within our town centers allows us to actually move the needle when it comes to sustainable communities. And I'll say it goes beyond transportation because I think a lot of these investments can set the table for a lot of these policy changes, in some cases, can set the table for more affordable housing development and, and making redevelopment happening, happen more rapidly, such as removing minimum parking requirements, things like that. And I'll, I'll pass the mic now.
Thanks for those thoughts, Kevin. That was great. Mr. Hill, uh, Mr. Hill, I don't see your camera on, but you're next on my screen. Do you wanna jump in quickly?
Sure, thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, there is, um, there, what I, some of the takeaways for me is, is that we, we do appear to be making slow, but, but steady progress in most thresholds, which is encouraging. One, uh, couple of things as far as progress I think we're making is, is definitely an SEZ restoration, and I appreciate uh, Mr. Ehrlich's comments and how Dan responded as well as far as making that a priority to make sure that we're tracking the right thing when it comes to SEZ restoration, but it does appear to be very positive as far as us attaining that threshold. Um, one other thing, just I thought we're making great progress and is is just our reporting quality of, of the thresholds. Um, I happen to be involved in the first three thresholds for TRPA, uh, threshold reports and, and it has come a long way. Um, so that, that's really encouraging. It's, it's much easier for anybody to to track and, and understand and ask questions about, about threshold attainment. One thing I, I do have some concerns with, um, and I think this is probably very typical for most most people, most board members and the public, is just water quality trends. Uh, particularly in Pelagic Lake Tahoe, um, and I realize that's gonna be a managing stormwater and restoring streams, wetlands may may help, but I realize that's a long-term indicator, but still, it's concerning to me and, and also the, um, the trends of phosphorus in, in the tributaries, cuz I know that's been a focus for the agency for, and, and really all agencies for a long time, so I'm a little disappointed and kinda concerned about that. About that trend. And just generally speaking, I think the, the Science Advisory Council is, is a super valuable resource. And I know we always strive to take this information and adapt more nimbly in our decision-making process, and I think that's something that we can still focus on more on the, in the next four years, is, is trying to be as responsive to what the data is telling us and, and making our management decisions uh, based on that information. And I realize that's a, that's a hard thing to do, cuz that takes a lot of funding for, for monitoring. Um, but I would like to still see us focus on that feedback loop and, uh, moving forward. So, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Kevin. Good feedback. Uh, I'm gonna go to, I'll just give you a heads up, Mr. McNamara, then Ms. Jacobson, then Ms. Stoller. So, Mr. McNamara, on to you. You'd like to contribute.
Yes, I would. Um, uh, great comments by everybody here on the commission and, uh, the presentation was great. As I think Eric Young had mentioned, uh, it'd be great that we'd be, all be knowledgeable enough to, uh, to explain, uh, all these criteria and the progress that we, that, that, that's been made here and be able to explain that to the public, and that's one of the things I've brought up several times, is about more public, uh, outreach. Uh, and I, I read the same comments, I'm sure you do too, before every meeting, um, by the same environmental groups, uh, that I think should be on our side on a lot of these issues, but the thing I'd, I'd like to bring up is more personal, uh, I just found out, um, I'm a PCT alumni and, uh, trail work volunteer. We just canceled thirty-five hundred hours of improvements that were, or work that we're scheduled to do uh, in the near future, this spring, because of lack of government grants. Uh, and almost everything that's done here is able to be done because of money. And I can see, and I, and I, I wish our, uh, Forest Service would, would talk to us about how this lack of grants and federal money and personnel, how it's gonna affect almost everything that's done here, and also the burden that's gonna put on state and county, uh, organizations to pick up the slack or, or may end up with the same problems. Um, I'm in the middle of trying, uh, I'm on an HOA, an incline, lost our insurance and, uh, because of the fire threat, and same thing down here in Reno as well. And, uh, trying to see into the future what, what kind of uh, fireproofing that we can do to our structures to, to enable us to gain insurance again, or, or at least have some kind of reasonable coverage. And, uh, that hasn't been brought up. I know in the last meeting, someone mentioned that each of the counties is gonna have probably new, uh, construction standards, which is great. Uh, but for those of us in the middle of this, uh, trying to decide how much we can afford to do to, uh, improve the resilience of our structures, uh, in the middle of the, you know, the wilderness-urban interface and, uh, and still be able to afford and insure them is, is gonna be a problem, and it all comes down to money. Uh, same thing with the, the housing issues we're talking about, the city center, uh, rehabilitations that we'd like to do. M- money is not gonna be available for the next few years that I, that I'm thinking, or at least not at reasonable rates. Um, anybody care to address that or have any thoughts on that, because that kinda puts a brake on just about everything that's, uh, that's done up here. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Good thoughts. Appreciate it. Okay, Ms. Jacobson, you are next, and then Ms. Stoller.
Sure, thank you so much. Great presentation. I actually saw this at the Regional Plan, uh, Committee and, and, uh, really appreciate the uh, what I heard at that meeting, um, but really appreciate the presentation and material. A lot of my comments, I guess, I, I think have already been stated. I, I have like all this, I'm keeping notes, and I have all this ditto, ditto on, on a lot of things that have been said. But in terms of accomplishments, I think I totally agree about the SEZ restoration and celebrating that success or the successes around that. Um, those are big. Um, I also think, agree with the housing, you know, with the, what TRPA has done on housing with the Tahoe Living Working Group is big, you know, as a, uh, for Placer County, we're seeing a lot of movement and desire from folks to, to actually get workforce housing on the ground, and people are excited about the work that TRPA has done on this. And, and I, but I do agree tying that achievement or accomplishment to the threshold, the sustainability, um, uh, goals and, and targets there is, it would be good. Um, you know, if we've got folks living in the basin, they're not driving into the basin, I mean, as a, as an employer, Placer County has a lot of folks that are, you know, driving up either from the west slope of Placer County or Reno or beyond, uh, to work, right, in the, in our office, in the basin. And if we can house those people locally, what does that mean from a threshold, um, you know, uh, gain, right, threshold attainment? And so tying that achievement with the work, the work that TRPA is doing around housing, what does that do to that, you know, threshold, uh, gain? Um, so for areas of concern, I'd say, um, the housing thing that would, that's one of them, is just making sure that we're tying those, uh, that work to that uh, threshold gain. Also wildfire risk, I, I just wanted to build, or sort of ditto John Hitchcock's comments on that, um. You know, in practice, we're implementing TRPA, you know, standards, uh, in the built environment, and a lot of times those conflict, uh, with what we're uh, sort of directed to do from the state side on defensible space and home hardening, firewise, using firewise materials, that kind of thing. Um, so how do those marry up? Like, how can we, you know, is there room to, to, to look at those, you know, look at some standards, TRPA standards and, and think differently about, you know, whether or not they are, uh, helping on the sort of firewise and wildfire risk perspective, right? So I think kind of truing those up, or, or even just having a dialogue around that would be good. Um, the same thing with wildfire, or another thing with wildfire that I wanted to mention is just, you know, there's so much, and this kinda goes to the, uh, James comment on, uh, you know, the, the comments that we hear over and over about concern about wildfire and evacuation. And there's so much being done, um, around the basin with emergency response, around fire, you know, they're, they're constantly, uh, you know, looking to the, the last fire to see if there's lessons learned and, and I think adapting, right, their, their strategies around evacuation and wildfire, uh, preparedness and that kind of thing. But in the area that I think, um, uh, an area of concern or an area where I, I feel like we could do better is the educational piece on that and like bringing people together and, and, um, and outreach to the public and, and, um, talking about, you know, what are we doing? How, how are we coordinated on, um, being prepared and um, how are we coordinated on a potential evacuation and a large fire event? Um, I think that there could be some, uh, some benefits to that, and so that's an area, I, I would say just sort of a challenge area, right, like if, uh, if, uh, I, I think an area we could do better. And then, uh, two, two more things on can, on sort of areas of concern or challenges. Um, one is I agree with, um, Kevin on the, you know, measuring, assessing VMT. Um, and in Placer, you know, we're, we're doing a lot around, I think, you know, uh, transportation, transit measures to reduce VMT. Um, but how do we get credit for that, right? Like, how do we look at what we, what we have done, what we're doing, you know, we're working on parking management. Um, we have, you know, building trails, uh, you know, uh, fare-free transit, microtran, microshuttles and that sort of thing. How are we sort of capturing that work that we're doing and, um, and sort of getting credit for that in the area around measuring and assessing VMT? Particularly for, this leads into my last thing on that, is, um, redevelopment. I mean, our towns, town centers in the North Tahoe region are, you know, there's not a lot happening, right? We are not seeing reinvestment. I mean, I, I know we did a a tour of Kings Beach area, but all you gotta do is walk around there and see what's happening, and, you know, this, this builds into the sustainability piece, you know, sustainable communities, but also just water quality, and we've got really old buildings that there's no reinvestment going into even the smaller businesses, and so I'm not talking about redevelopment at like large scale. I think we need to be you know, attentive to, to what the community wants, um. But how do we, how, how do we help the existing folks, that property owners, businesses, to improve their properties, even on a small scale, right, and, and basically sustain these businesses and viability, and then, and then what does that mean for water quality, right? And, and I feel like, you know, the regional plan had a lot of great incentives, and then the area plans came in behind that, built on that, but we're not seeing a whole lot. Projects are stuck, they're, they're not, we just aren't seeing the kind of redevelopment that I think we all hoped for. Um, so is there an opportunity to build on that or sort of to explore it and measure it, right? What, uh, where are we at with implementation, um, of our, of, in our town centers in terms of meeting regional plan goals for redevelopment? What does that mean for water quality benefits, that sort of thing? And how, how do we hit, and it comes down, I mean, obviously, it all comes down to funding, um, and, but how do we, how do we help further incentivize and sort of build on this and, um, and try to really achieve those goals of, because that is, I mean, that's sustainable communities, right? That is the, uh, what helps to, I think, achieve threshold attainment. So, um, those are my areas of concern. In terms of looking forward, you know, on the plaster side, housing is obviously a huge priority for us, so is redevelopment, the things that I just mentioned. And then a huge focus on VMT reduction strategies, including parking management, transit, microtransit, more trails, all that sort of thing. So, um, anyway, that's all I have. Thanks.
That was a lot. That was good. Yeah, thanks, Crystal.
Sorry about that.
No, don't be sorry. That's what we're looking for. So on to you, Ellery.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think what I wanted to do first was kind of go back to comments, uh, made by Eric and, and just kind of echo those. He looks back in time, um, to see where we come, where we came from and now where we are today. And I think I just wanted to reinforce how, um, how we benefited from a really good foundation that was set in place for us, a foundation of a political boundary that is coincident with an environmental boundary, with the Tahoe watershed boundary. Um, and, um, our compact, the establishment of thresholds being at the top of the pyramid, and the regional plan and the EIP program working hand-in-hand to help us to attain those thresholds. I mean, I don't know of any other place that has that kind of foundation or those fundamentals. I think it's really special and unique. Um, and I think it's set us up for a lot of gain, and I think it will continue to, to set us up for for our progress. Um, I also wanted to, um, echo the accomplishment of um, our continued strong partnership and our continued focus. I think it's because of our ability to collaborate and work together and partner together that helps us achieve our gains as well. Um, I also wanted to say that SEZ accomplishment, I wanted to give us two thumbs up on that one. Yeah, and I like to see the improvement, um, in the scenic threshold as well. Um, in terms, I'm gonna kind of blend areas of concern and looking forward. Um, in terms of those topics, I, I noticed in Dan's presentation, um, that sometimes the Tahoe Basin is either a beneficiary or a recipient of impacts that come from outside the basin. And, uh, we saw that in air quality standards, um, with, you know, wildfire that happens outside of our boundary, um, or also improvements in tailpipe emissions that happen outside the Tahoe Basin. And, and I think that it could be helpful to mark or somehow indicate in the evaluation report that, that whether we're trending upwards or downwards for those particular items um, may be due to factors outside of our control, that they may be due to regional or even global influences. And that might help to clarify that while we're putting in really good effort into those areas, our use of time may be better spent in maybe engaging with our congressional delegation or with, um, state legislatures, for example. Or there might be a good complement or synergy there. Um, and then finally, I think, um, for the environmental improvement program, um, I think it'd be helpful for us to have um, some additional thought put towards the sustainable recreation or the recreation threshold, um, so that we can kind of measure the sustainability part of recreation, not just the accommodation of visitors to our local amenities. Okay, those are my comments.
Perfect. Thank you, Ellery. That was great. And the last APC member online I see is Mr. Judge.
I'm going last, but I hear some repetition here. I guess first thing I think, I'm proud of all the load reductions we've made in my talk despite the lake's rapid reaction. Although we may be close to that prediction. One thing I think we may be missing there is our things, just what Ellie was saying, are out of our control. So how can we continue to build on the success is figure out what's happening with it. And they are working with the Science Council pretty big, so we have a lot of different studies. To figure out what we have control over as humans and what we don't have control. And so hopefully some of these things, Science Council, we're, you know, we'll work in policy. We can actually improve our policy. And some things, I think, the urban areas, I think we're pretty good on, on our spawn lock. I think we may be missing the mark a little bit on some of the burned areas that are probably having an increase in sediment loads going tributaries or phosphorus and things like that. So some like concern areas. One, just sort of concern overarching, I don't know if anyone's done this, but we have atmospheric deposition or air quality standards and the thresholds and also in the TMDL. And it looks like we are patting ourselves on the back for doing great on the air quality thresholds. They seem pretty level, but in some of that TMDL load reduction charts, there's been some significant reductions in nitrogen and fine sediment particles, which is the PM 2.5. Nitrogen that are deposited on the lake. I'm not sure if we overlapped the load reduction tables in the TMDL with the thresholds. So that's one thing. Another one of my concerns is, you know, parking, cars have a huge impact more than a single person walking around or on a bike. They grind the asphalt, they grind up the traction sand, all those fine sediment particles get airborne or get in stormwater and go into our water bodies. Even like the backcountry ski area, parking areas are just crammed. It looks like scary board. And, you know, are there any facilities in those areas? Where, where are people using their toilet? You know, there could be a hundred cars in one back home spot these days. So that's the one thing, and I think that does a lot with the recreation issues. So that's one of my areas of concern. Sharpay next four years, I think, you know, we haven't done a great job getting the white cars into our Americas. You know, we love our cars, we love to drive around, but I think the cars are the biggest impact. And the amount of cars, if we can get more people here in other ways besides in their private auto vehicle, I think that would be important. And I think seen it. Yeah, one thing I'm starting to see, I, I'm not sure how the highway scene was improving because even in South Lake Tahoe, there's some fenced off areas, run down and motels. I haven't looked at the scenic threshold, then realized that shoreline scenic units are probably improving. But I'd be surprised if the highway scenic units aren't improving enough. You know, a lot of that, I think, has been the black rapid sign forcing there and just, you know, dilapidated buildings. Sort of mediation force property owners to, to fix things.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate it. That's, that's it for members online, but we skipped Mr. Ehrlich, so we'll go back to you, Robert. You can just say ditto.
There's a lot of ditto, but so for the progress, I think the SDC stuff, particularly the large projects. AIS, the inspection education really helped. It's hard to imagine what things would be like if those programs were not here or were not continuing. Concerns on water. Oh, okay. Wait for you to move to concerns. Water quality. I'm not sure how it's evaluated. I'm, you know, there's a lot of good big projects. I'm still concerned about like BMPs, source control in the developed areas that are connect, well connected to discharging out to the lake. AIS, I'm concerned about how do we keep funding for that to keep those programs going? Looking forward, other folks have said some really good things on, there's issues of public concern. This is priorities now, I think, or oh, we've got one more to go. And then I think one of the other online members spoke about, you know, there's issues that the public seem really concerned about, like, like housing, fires, fire, preparedness, evacuations, that type of stuff. So how can we tie in transportation or other thresholds? How will those interact with those issues that are the public seems to be really concerned about? And is there a way we can help show that moving towards achievements of the various thresholds could help get necessary support for programs from the public and for, from agencies and legislators?
Thanks, Robert. I guess I can go really quickly. I'm on the APC as well. I've had a chance to weigh in on this though at the Thai meeting. To me, I'm really proud of the winter clarity improvement. I think that's, that's a direct correlation to management actions on the ground that, that we've all been taking. So ditto on the process piece, and I think Ellery said it really well. And Mr. Young started that conversation. For the second one, I'm, I'm concerned a little bit that thresholds aren't being updated fast enough. It seems like we do still have a bunch of lingering ones with undetermined standards, no measurable goals. So the longer we let that continue, the longer we will continue to have those in our report as, as a no answer essentially. So I think we owe it to ourselves and the public to, to update those thresholds faster. I know that that's going through a process, but I liked what Crystal said about town center redevelopment. That's the same with us. We're just, we're really stalled and we're not seeing what the regional plan anticipated as far as redevelopment in Tahoe. Our developed areas are kind of dying. I would be surprised if any of our developed areas got a good scenic score because when I drive through South Lake Tahoe, I'm not as proud as I want to be of my, of my town, my hometown. I also was going to say, and Ellery said it, I think we need to separate sustainable recreation from destination stewardship. I just don't think those, those two are the same destination stewardship. Sort of, sorry, sustainable rec evolved into destination stewardship, and I think those two are entirely different things. And we need, we need some threshold standards for sustainable rec. Looking forward, I want to focus more on sustainable communities. And I'll steal Hester's idea of linking the code and projects better to thresholds. I think that, that has to happen. And I'm, I'm done. Does anyone want a quick go back or a supplement? Otherwise, we're gonna, I think, hear some final words from Dan. And then we're going to go to the public. Ms. Carr.
I have a couple of quick ideas that came up during the discussion. And it's in the, in the areas of celebration. Cam, so I think it's really important to celebrate the, the fact that the Forest Service and the tribe partnered heavily on the West Shore in a, in an amazing project out there that it's kind of too soon to tell on the outcomes, but I think that was a huge accomplishment. And I think continuing to incorporate as much traditional environmental or ecological knowledge, T E K, into what we do, I think is, is good going forward. I also want to celebrate the fact that although it's a little old, at the beginning of the threshold update initiative stakeholder working group effort, the Tahoe Science Advisory Council embarked on a study and did a white paper on benchmarking what we do against the Great Lakes and Chesapeake Bay and a couple of international locations similar to ours. And I think it's good to maybe look back at that and remind ourselves that we're doing it right. We're doing it well. And some of those other communities are looking to us to see what we're doing because they want to copy what we're doing. And so the general finding there was, yeah, we're doing a good job in the processes and procedures and things that we're tackling and, and what our priorities are. So I think we can continue to make those mid course adjustments, but stay the course because I think we're, we should celebrate that we're on the right track as a, as a group. Thanks.
Agreed. Thank you for that. Okay, I think we're good. Kim, is that helpful from us? Is there anything else that we should do here before we go to Dan and the public?
Kim, character for the record, that was excellent. I thought that was a really fruitful discussion. If you couldn't see me on the video, I was flip charting all of it and that will all feed into this recommendations report. So I'm really grateful for your input and we'll continue to refine it over the next few months. Dan, you have anything?
No, not on that in particular. I'll, maybe I'll just do a quick rap overall.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Can I go to the next slide? And I won't go into great detail here. I just want to say that this process that we're doing in engaging people and to provide input on what's going well, what's not going well, what are they concerned about and what do they want to see over the next four years is something we've done with our governing board. We've done with a number of partners. And as Kim mentioned, we're engaging the public in that process. And so that's the feedback form you see on the right hand side of your screen that Ashley asked, asked about. It's open for the next couple of months and I would encourage you, if you've forgotten anything, type it into that feedback form or email us. There's also pages or there's an option to provide feedback on any of the individual threshold pages. So as you're reviewing it, if you notice something that catches your eye, you think we missed something, I would encourage you to just click the feedback button and send us an email and say, you did this well or you did that not so well. Please improve. Next slide. I also just wanted to take a quick moment. So in those, in the other discussions that we've had thus far, a lot of the same themes that you all mentioned today have come up in each of those groups. And we've highlighted a number of those, you know, recurrent themes that have come up in these discussions such as, you know, AIS control hitting the stream environment zone restoration threshold. The, next slide. Perfect. Oh no, which one's which? I forgot which one comes second. Okay. And, you know, the, the same thing for the concerns. Many of the concerns, I think, we heard about today have been, have come up in these other forums and people are highlighting the same thing. And I'm not, I don't intend to, you know, go through every bullet point here, but you will see at the end of this process, you will see all this feedback. You'll likely see the report contain the flip charts that came out of this exercise today. And so you'll be able to trace the full lineage of where these concerns or where these priorities were raised. And then how we have incorporated that into our recommendations for what happens next. Last slide, please. And so finally, you know, the same thing also with priorities going forward. Many people have mentioned the need to continue to update our threshold standards to make them more measurable and specific. The concerns related to funding and what happens both to project implementation as well as to our monitoring program, if there are large changes to our funding. The need to continue to coordinate on forest management, the reducing the risk of fire as well as on evacuation. Something we touched on today. It's something that's also come across in these larger discussions. And then, you know, you know, finally, the, the need to focus on transportation or continue to focus on transportation is something we've heard in just about every venue that we've had these discussions. So I appreciate all of you taking the time today. I encourage you to reach out again going forward. If you think you've forgotten anything, no suggestion is a bad suggestion. And it will all be cataloged going forward. So thank you again.
Thanks, Dan. And then the, the threshold eval gets adopted by your board when?
So the action that we take is technically issuance. It's not an adoption. But the idea is that we are collectively writing the last chapter of the report together. So the, the final chapter of the report is called conclusions and recommendations, which is really where to from here. And the idea is that we are producing that. We'll bring that back in draft form, I believe, to the governing board in May with the idea that, that we ask them to issue thereafter.
Okay.
So that you'll have another shot at the recommendations report as well. So if we've misinterpreted anything that you've said, you'll have the opportunity to correct that.
Okay, coming in May. Good. Excellent. Okay.
Can I, Mr. Chairman John Hester? I think it's coming back here before it goes to the governing board. But I think it, I think it, what I have is June. So it would come to the, go to the governing board after that, I assume.
Okay, we're flexible. We'll be here for you when you need us. Okay, great. So that concludes our session here, but now we will go to public comment on this item. So I'll just remind you quickly how to do that. For those in the room, and I don't see many, you could please come up to the podium and turn the microphone on. For members of the public who wish to comment on item five B, this is the threshold evaluation report draft, please either raise your hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen or dial star nine on your telephone and you'll be called upon and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. So I'm assuming no one in the room wants to comment. And so Catherine, we will go to members of the public online, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two hands raised online. Niobe Burden, please unmute to make your comment.
Hello, Commission. Thank you for your interest in this. It's interesting to hear everyone's input on the specific standards. I do, I believe that some of you have read my public comment, but I wanted to make note that since yesterday, all of the NAs on the dashboard have been changed or things have changed around. So you won't see those NAs, which I refer to in my public comment. I'm not quite sure how I know that they've been working on this. I met with Dan and Kim yesterday and talked about this, about explanations on those. It's important, I believe, to take the peer review report from the Tahoe Science Advisory Council seriously. There has been no mention of, of their report by staff today. And I mentioned the quote of, I am quoting from the summary of the second sentence. The first sentence was put into our presentation here today, but the second sentence says, "The disconnect between some standards and management activities reinforces the need identified by previous threshold evaluation reviews. Revisit the three threshold standard system for air quality, noise, recreation, vegetation, preservation and water quality. Revisiting the threshold standards and the associated data points is needed to ensure TRPA's monitoring programs can best inform implementation actions and monitor the impacts of those investments." I think that's what we're all trying to do here. We need to revisit the dashboard to, which is what they're saying. In our discussions yesterday, separating the quantitative or measurable standards from the qualitative standard or management implementation and policy standards. I know there's a lot of interaction between them, but separating them will make it more clear for the public as well as everyone that's making decisions on what, how to go forward. The management implementation standards were included in the pie charts towards attainment. They represent eighteen percent of the standards, but yet they are not quantitative or measurable. They are just a management implement should, and should show trends. So some clarity that needs to be done here. Last priority is Last priority is to determine a carrying capacity study, which would help uh, with our recreation standard. Give us parameters and for visitor management, uh, I've talked about carrying capacity studies prior and lots of different public comments, and I just wanted to reiterate that we need to come up with parameters to uh, go about doing that study. Um, and that's it. Thank you for all your help.
Thank you, Niobe.
And the last hand raised is Doug Flaherty. Doug, please unmute to make your comment.
Thank you, Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org. TahoeCleanAir.org adopts the Sierra Club February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five threshold letter to the TRPA, which in part states, "After reviewing the threshold evaluation language, it appears Lake Tahoe's air and water quality are in rapid decline. Given this evidence, we question how TRPA can continue to amend the regional plan allowing for one hundred percent coverage in town centers, unlimited density, and fifty-six foot tall buildings with no required parking without complying with section four point, four point two point C and four point five of the Code of Ordinances. These sections of the code require TRPA to confirm that any code amendment or projects um, may not only achieves but maintains the thresholds. With air and water quality thresholds in rapid decline, TRPA, TRPA cannot confirm that these thresholds are being maintained. Therefore, TRPA should cease amending the code and continue approve and cease continuing approval of further development projects until these thresholds are being maintained or improved upon." I also point the APC to regional plan goal LU debt three point two, which states, "No person or, or persons shall develop property so as to endanger the public health, safety, and welfare." Therefore, in order to avoid endangering public safety, TRPA must add a roadway evacuation capacity timing threshold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
And Mr. Chair, there are no more hands raised to comment.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. I'll close public comment. Any response to public comments needed, or are we good?
Dan, again, maybe I'll just clarify quickly what the NA means on the dashboard. So, uh, for any of you and as well as online listeners. So NA is used to designate a standard that is not active at the time of the evaluation. So we offer multiple views within the threshold dashboard to provide historic context within each of the threshold categories. So if you are looking just at the twenty-twenty-three dashboard, you will only see standards evaluated and active in the twenty-twenty-three time period, and there are no NAs within that time period. If you are looking through the historic views, and we do try to provide that context, you will see areas of NA where a standard was, was non-existent in that evaluation period. So if you were looking at the, for example, the AIS standards from one of the historic views, you will see all the AIS standards that had been active between twenty fifteen and the current evaluation and the twenty-twenty-three evaluation period. Actually, you might go back to two thousand and eleven, I apologize. And if it was active during any of those periods, you will see the evaluation and the symbol for that evaluation, and you will see NA in the years that it was not active. Just a point of clarification.
That makes sense. Okay. Um, are we good? Thanks for writing all that down, Kim.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we look forward to seeing our words in your report, and we will continue to follow this, so. That concludes item five B. Were you gonna jump in, Hester, or are you ready for the next?
Ready for six A.
Okay, let's do it then.
But I, I will transition by saying, at the governing board meeting, I talked with the chair, acting chair, because the vice chair, and he said, um, "You guys tell us, you're the experts." And I, and I thought to myself, wait till it comes here, you guys are gonna add some nice perspectives to the threshold report, and you did. Particularly the town center perspectives, because that's something we don't talk about a lot. And that was good. You talked about the stormwater and the scenic and all of those things. And there's so, so many of the people here, that's the part of the lake they live in, the communities they live in, and we need to talk about that more. Anyway, that's my segue to uh, your actions that you took last time on the Tahoe Basin area plan and the South Shore area plan amendments. Went to the regional planning committee, and they recommended them to the governing board. The governing board will hear them in two weeks. Uh, there's a local government committee meeting on historic scenic and cultural, including a Hope Sullivan, who's gonna be presenting from Carson City that starts in here at one. Uh, if you want to stay for that, because I know some of you are staff to some of those local government committee members. There will be no April APC meeting, but that same day, we will have a local government committee on plastic bands, um, bags and bottles. In May, uh, the APC will get the draft regional transportation plan and environmental document. And then unless the schedule changes, as we discussed earlier, uh, in June, you'll get the um, APC will get to hear the threshold, this revised draft, return to you, uh, for your recommendation to the governing board to release it. Uh, and then I wanted to tell you that in your packet, uh, and over on that table there are copies of the annual report, which prominently list you all on the inside cover on acknowledgements. So you're gonna take it home to your kids or send it to your mom and dad or whatever. You're famous now. And with that, uh, I have no other, nothing else to report. Thank you.
Thanks, John. So for those that didn't hear, it sounds like we will be off in April, so everyone knows that. Leave it on your calendar so no one books anything, but uh, we won't be here. Perfect. Thank you, John, and I'll go over to Graham for the general council status report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no uh, report or update today. Thank you.
Perfect. Keep us on schedule. So I'll go to each APC member now. Please share anything relevant for the group, and I'll just ask that you stay semi-targeted in the interest of time, but we'd love to hear anything relevant from APC members that they'd like to share. So I'll start with you, Ashley.
Yeah, I know there's probably a lot of questions for the Forest Service. I don't have a lot of answers for folks currently. What I will say, uh, this goes back to some of the comments related to the threshold stuff as well, um, and sort of the funding piece. What I would say is that don't use what's happening right now as a predictor for the future, for stuff. Some of the things that are held up right now are, are for more like, I would say, uh, like language and wording things, and that they, they may be going through at a certain point. Um, you know, kind of this happens a lot of times with new administrations, where things kind of go on a pause for a little while. But having said that, um, I do recognize that um, it is impacting our partners, and that if folks have specific questions, um, you can send them to me, you can send them to Eric Walker, our forest supervisor. We're doing our best to try and get back to folks. And we have gotten a little bit of, um, some of the things have started to, to kind of flow again. Um, so if there are some specific questions, I can, I can answer those. But project-related stuff, I will also just say that there, um, it's affecting, you know, kind of the planning piece as well. So some of the stuff that we were hoping to be already out with, um, is still uh, on hold with some un, unknown timelines for those. Um, but we do hope to be able to come out with our Caldor restoration scoping, um, sometime here imminently, and then possibly as well our Lake Tahoe West EA, um, or, you know, West Shore restoration stuff. The trail stuff uh, is a little bit of an unknown timeline on that one. And if there's any other specific project questions, I could take those as well.
Yeah, thanks for addressing that. I know it's on the top of everyone's mind. I feel bad for anyone working at a federal agency currently. Sounds very challenging. So we're all with you in spirit.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Ehrlich? Okay, Gar?
Uh, nothing at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Gar. Ms. Carr? No? Hitch?
Nope.
Wow, we're doing well on time. I'm gonna go online. Mr. Drake?
Not today.
Okay, Mr. McNamara?
No, thank you.
All right, Ms. Jacobson?
Not today. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Stoller?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Right, Mr. Young?
Thank you for another good discussion. I'll see you in the spring.
Okay, perfect. And Mr. Judge dropped off, so Mr. Hill. So we're good. Uh, no real updates for me either. But I just want to thank everyone for engaging today. As always, um, we, we do provide a lot of value, and so it's great to be on the team. And let us now go to item seven, which is public interest comments. Um, this is for members of the public wishing to address the APC again. And we'll go first to members in the rooms, and seeing none, we're gonna go online. So now is your opportunity to address the APC. Just be aware, we are prohibited from taking action on items not on our agenda. Please raise your hand at the bottom of your Zoom screen or dial star nine on your telephone if you'd like to make a public comment. And I'll turn it over to you, Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one hand raised online. Doug Flaherty, please unmute to make your comment.
Thank you, Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org. No agency or project should make it harder for people to escape a wildfire. On the Nevada side, agency approval of incremental but cumulatively considerable Lake Tahoe Basin transportation plans and projects which make it harder for people to escape deadly wildfire violate Nevada Constitution, Article one-one, which states inalienable rights. All, and excuse the word men, but it says all men, uh, have certain inalienable rights, among which are pursuing and obtaining safety, I underscore the word safety and happiness. For the Nevada side representatives and especially Warshaw County, um, considering that the incline village, Crystal Bay, official evacuation time by Warshaw County is six hours. Our independent uh, analysis puts it more like nine to eleven hours. Um, this is, this is really jeopardizing uh, and making it hard for people to escape a wildfire when you present area plan amendments that can cause increases in ADUs or maybe a thousand to three thousand ADUs. So it's just not gonna happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Mr. Chair, there are no more hands raised to comment.
Thank you, Catherine. I'll close that public comment period. Sounds like maybe an item on evacuation at some point where, where it would be relevant for us to weigh in on. We've heard, we, I think we continue to hear that. Uh, public safety evacuation might be good for us to have a discussion on if it's, if there's somewhere we can fit in, in that.
We will try to work up something. This is a topic, as you know, comes up here and at the governing board, and I will try to work up something and bring it back to you.
Thanks, John. Okay, I'll move us to item eight, which is adjournment. Could I please have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Garth. I'm assuming no one is opposed, but all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you all for another good meeting. We stand adjourned at twelve twenty-seven. Have a good rest of the day and get ready for some snow.